Alright folks, it's six o'clock. Old call was meeting to order, um, Tuesday, November nineteenth. This is our planning commission. We'll start with the old call.
Wait, bring him over here.
Margaret Rader here. Ralph Sutter here.
Kevin Clay here.
Todd Scholz here.
Fifteen Cray here.
Tim Warren here.
And there are little houses here. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Of course. Great. Here he is. Um, is there, by consensus, agreement on a minute from our November twelfth meeting? Oh wait, they're not available yet. Right, okay. Never mind. Should be continued. Uh, are there any conflicts of interest that people would like to declare? Okay, see none. In those public hearings, um, and number two, are there any citizens who change to address the commission on any of the agenda items? Okay, see none. We'll move to the old business, so let's get ahead to new business, um, with our presentation on the cultural center project.
Hi, everybody. I'm Tim Warren from Arts and Culture. And like last time, I just had a very, just wanted a short, uh, couple of things to update you on and, um, wanted to keep you in the loop. And so if there's some questions, I can show you some concept designs that I believe you've got with your jungle supplements. And, um, I just wanted to talk through some of them, get your questions. And, um, I know that city department heads will hopefully be reviewing them shortly, um, the detailed architectural drawings. Um, I know that historically, um, I've learned, this is my first capital improvement project in the city that I've been a part of, and I know, big one at least. And I know that historically, community services hasn't necessarily brought up things that are within the park system to the planning commission. Um, I do feel like this one's a little bit different in the sense that, um, there is a lot of impact with right way right nearby. Accessibility, streets right there, um, we're talking about crosswalks and a lot of other pedestrian traffic that will impact the space. Where I think your advisement and thinking about city projects, um, as it connects to this one, will be really, um, helpful for the future success. Um, as you can see on this map, and, um, can I go touch that screen right here? Well, one of the big things for, uh, accessibility, uh, with this, uh, DNR grant was to create this, um, right. This accessible walkway. All the way down, so it connects with the bike path. Like, right now, there really isn't a direct connection with the bike path or the short line. And this will create that. The one, um, thing that would interest you then, you know, where does the crosswalk go? I know that, um, we've talked to engineering about this, and it seems that the crosswalk between this corner and Hampton is, but it's a midsection crosswalk. It's something that, um, we're planning on, but again, it's going to be something that community development and everyone has to agree upon. Um, so that's a really important part of this. Um, the, uh, you can see the parking lot, um, has been kind of just, uh, evened out. Um, a lot of those unusual, uh, curves and corners aren't, there aren't as many, but it's still a little bit awkward. And I know that facilities had some concerns about removals, you know? Um, and all the backup. Um, we're trying to create actually more green space up here, so it feels like a, a park. Uh, adding more green space, uh, parking lot is, um, quite a bit smaller. And, you know, looking towards the future, it's just really, uh, walkability, um, and slowing traffic down to the long-term future on Front Street. Um, I know that complete streets are part of the master plan for the city, and, um, I think it will be interesting as this project develops, can there be, um, more, um, street on that side and more plantings? And to let people know that they'd arrive in downtown as soon as they could get home. Um, right now, it's still quite a speedway. You're trying to take a left onto Rock Street or, or just, I don't want people to drag race as soon as they get off that roundabout, but that is a concern. Because we invite people there for events, um, and people all have to be really mindful. Um, there's also a staircase over here. This is not that grant, but staircase that goes right where provisions is. DPA wants to get rid of that. That's not a part of this grant, um, these grant dollars, but it's dangerous because if you get downstairs, there's no crosswalk, and you can't see the traffic that's, uh, coming on the lake shores. That's a concern, but we know that, um, it would be great to find a way to get that to be removed. Um, and also there's a lot of curb cuts on this corner too that are not yet accessible. So things to keep in mind as we're looking at, uh, right away through the future plans. Uh, we are looking at, um, future planting more trees on this, uh, south end of the park. So there's just a little bit more of that urban, um, that urban, uh, forest feel. Um, those won't be done right away either, but we are working with the, uh, the Lions and Beunification and hopefully a lot of other partners to, uh, once we get into the space and live there and kind of see how people are using it and the pathways that are making it. It's going to be easier to understand where more plantings can go and pathways and things like that. So these are some conceptual, um, designs, um, with that, where the person is kind of standing right there in the image before. That's kind of where that, those handicap spots are, um, right there. Um, there's, uh, the old walkway, the old flagstone is right in this area with the flagpole. We will get a new flagpole, so it'll be placed somewhere else on the property that's not in these plans. And then right here, this area, you see kind of this, um, this sunken area. You can see it better on a couple of the other images. Let's see. But that's the facing Front Street. Um, you can see that, go back to the facing Front Street, um, that's a placeholder, that, uh, map of the cultural trail. We're looking at in the future putting a mosaic, um, that is inspired by the community. Um, that would be quite a significant piece of public art, um, that would be on the side of that, that building. Um, there was a couple of designs that were sent to you. One was, where the front was, uh, we got rid of this, uh, cable roof. We got rid of that. There was a higher glassed-in gallery's, uh, entryway. Um, but things cost a lot. When we got the prices back from, um, potential costs, um, we said, okay, we have to keep it as it is. Because we don't want to go over the amount that we have to spend. We're not fundraising additionally for this right now. So, um, pretty simple. The biggest thing is securing the envelope and making sure that the building is really efficient and tuck-pointed and doesn't have a lot of drafts and, you know, is, is efficient. That's the side of the building. Um, you can see where there's a lot more, uh, windows along the side. You can see that kind of, uh, green, like that kind of almost like a nest-like gathering space next door to it, which it really adds a lot of, I think, dimension to the entire space and draws people in. Um, hopefully some kind of vibrant, um, space in the winter for storytelling in those months. Um, but a lot more expanded windows you can see in that picture, and that's the multipurpose public space that people will be able to rent, just like the, this public. Um, and that, this is just a picture of some of the, um, kind of conceptual arting inspirations that, um, I don't think this is actually part of the design, so we need to speak through those. Is there anything else? Yeah. So, you know, looking at kind of, um, light staining the bricks so it's lighter. Um, these aren't the final colors or anything like that. Like, I think that the wood should be a little bit lighter in color too, kind of going with that Scandinavian feel. Um, and keeping it really simple. We couldn't get really fancy with it. You know, a lot of it's on the inside, having to really open that space up on the inside and the windows. So, um, but from the outside perspective, just clean up and simplify. So, I don't know if there's any questions, um, or thoughts or things you'd like me to, you know, kind of consider as we talk to the architects and move this along. We're looking at, hopefully by, um, first or second week of December, sending it out to bid, um, and then having a contract by, um, the January.
Um, I have a question, yes. Um, because the parking lot has gotten smaller, um, are you planning on having the people use the parking lot across Front Street? Uh, for parking or over low parking?
The idea is the parking lot below the hill that's empty a lot during the day, that one further down. But these would mostly all be, um, handicap spots for, you know, short-term parking. Um, one of the thoughts, since we have a year, once we're in there, and we see us opening right away, um, but how do we do more wayfinding with the DPA? How do we let people know where the parking is? Because there is enough parking in this community, um, ample parking, but it's two-minute walk or a one-minute walk. So there's that down, there's parking lot right near the Ordock and the corner of Baraga in front, and then across the street.
Well, that's the one that's.
The Rock Street parking lot, yeah.
Uh, crosswalk there.
Right.
Uh, and that is now gone. So just thinking if that's going to be there, we might want to consider that as a crosswalk, crossing that block to be part of the lot.
And I don't know, um, John and, um, Dennis and Dave will have to work together. I don't know what's involved, um, getting a crosswalk, um.
There was one, I don't know, I don't know, hold that there. I, I don't know.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Yeah, I am curious about it. I, I don't understand my own.
It's pretty powerful.
Yeah.
Ideally, like, when this becomes a vibrant, huggable, artistic activity, it can be fantastic. We will hopefully have people walking there, walking across, so I think that's really where, you know.
So it is right at that cross, so having a walkway right there.
Yeah, and I don't know, um, all of the details. Um, I know the department has to do with capital equipment projects and their queue and line, but I think we are, we are prepared that the community is gonna, okay, how do I say it? We cross the street, it's gonna become an issue. So how do we prepare for that and maybe make it a part of our long-term strategy? I know that there's some particular grants that we can start working to, that would be complete streets, plantings. I think that would really narrowing the street would slow things down. Um, the landscape architect was really much about, you know, there used to be parallel parking on that street. You're looking at old pictures from the seventies and eighties, and there's parallel parking, street parking. And that's why there's the, it's all wide there, which is really interesting. So how you visually slow people down and, um, it's not just a get to the other end quickly.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a few. I was curious about, um, all this being coordinated with the Lions, with the Beunification, perhaps even, um, the Lions and the Parks Department.
Right. There's been a lot of, um, engagement with the community. And we started meeting with community members, um, in January, listening sessions and talking about all the concerns. And I know the Lions especially have a lot of history and connection with that. Um, then there was more listening sessions this, uh, summer with lots of different stakeholders. And I think there was consensus, even with the Lions and Beunification, that there's, this is one park. Right now, it's actually three different spaces. You have Lakeside Lions Park, Father Marquette Park, and a building in the middle. Um, and things have changed, and we are looking at, you know, some creative ways to brand it as one park that has these incredible history and amenities and people's stories in it with interpretive signage and, you know, creating a really wonderful, like, I have met with Lions recently, actually, a couple of meetings, talking about simplifying the space right now and waiting until, um, the building is completed, the parking lot's completed, to really look at how where the plantings can go and how we can use the space. What we do are planning on, it's an interpretive signage, um, specifically that the Lions will work on. So they feel, um, connected to that space and then also talk about the future of, you know, what are groups that are, um, invested in spaces like this? What is the relationship between cities? Is there a formal agreement with these groups? And how do we get more people invested to make it everybody's parks? So it's short and long answer, it's complicated, uh, but I think we're making, um, good headway, but it's not without any thoughts or challenges. And all the groups could tell you that as well. Yeah.
Or groups there, it's just wanting to make sure that whatever they have planned is, is something soon to wear up with it. They're aware of when changes are coming in.
Yeah. I think what was hard about that was that, um, that no one planned that we would, um, this building would be available. We'd write grants, it'd be successful, and all of a sudden, everything shifted. It wasn't just green space next to a building that's privately rented. And so that whole, the whole mission shifted, and we're all trying to adjust to that.
Okay. Also. There's, there are a couple monuments on site that doesn't seem to be accounted with those. Are they going to, just to be accommodated somewhere on site?
Which, which monuments?
There's a, uh, a bronze plaque there.
Right, so the bronze plaque has to get incorporated, um, into, uh, one of the interpretive signs that will be there. That hasn't been done yet, but that was being very clear that that needs to be incorporated, the one that's within by the flagpole there on a, on a rock.
Yeah, but the Lions have, um, the class, um, they're, they're, they think about that process, they, they're like, please.
Right. Right. So we have to work really, really closely. You know, my hope, and I told them, is that this is an opportunity. This park is all about civic engagement, coming together, having listening sessions. I've talked to all of you, and I think this park represents our kind of a place where our community can come together and share things. And it's their space, right? It's warm and it's inviting, and I'm hoping that some of the civic groups, like Beunification and Lions, actually get more attention than they ever have. If they're engaged in space, people are going to engage with them as well. So maybe increasing membership with some of these groups, and maybe this, I hope, will be the start of actively, maybe have a cultural ambassador program for the community, or volunteer program working with other groups. And I think there's, um, a lot that will come out of this, but I hope, boy, they'll engage a lot of community groups. The Lions hopefully will be, um, continue to be an invested partner in that. Right. I know Mary Rule wants a smaller flagpole. We don't have the money for a smaller flagpole, but that's the intent. Put it somewhere else and have a smaller.
Part of it is, I was just going in there, I don't think it was.
Oh, you were?
Yes.
We have to get your, your story.
And you used to have to take flag in every day. That was before you were allowed to take flags up. The, um, the other thing is that the WPA installed bicycle block. It's getting demolition, probably in the street to find some place to store that material. And it's on auto, the corner through wild. It was extremely difficult to find any kind of similar material to that tree there. Walls that grow part and Williams Park have seen smoke, um, where it's for the city, right? So great, as much as we could. It's originally from the, um, US forty-one saw rock cut. It was a pretty near back in nineteen forty-four.
I'll have to get with you on the history of that, because that's something that we haven't talked, we haven't uncovered yet.
And, um, the walls at Fort Williams' front, I can't remember when, the name, the whole, it was built with that same period. And, um, we had a basic area, we had a flagpole, and also, we had, it's over. Couldn't rebuild it, so we were able to build another wall, trying to maintain.
We are planning on trying to, you know, save all of that. One of the issues though, whoever, um, prepared it, they did it with, um, concrete or masonry at some point, not like sand or gravel. So it would be very tedious chipping away. I mean, I'm not a contractor, so we get contractors. Chipping away is, you know, how to not break the stone. I, you know, depends how much we want to save it. We can still use it, yeah. So absolutely.
I just want to make sure that I understand. So, yes, there's stone that's being reused from Harville or from the spot right there?
Um, on that. This other side that will be reused or held aside, but yes, it's all. And that's to, maybe, um, for this, it's all sad, but this is to make, we have to make, one part of this grant is to make it an accessible pathway all the way around that would connect, you can see right here, connecting. This is right in the way of that flagstone. And so this is your handicap accessible pathway that's going to connect those, uh, parts. You'll connect here and you'll connect here.
And the flag still is not very handicap accessible.
Right.
Yeah.
There is still some of it in place on the bottom of our kids' site. Some stairways over there.
And that looks big.
Yeah, we're not touching that site. That's where we're putting that accessibility.
Just, it's, it's very valuable materials. City reserve, after I had people digging through the old quarry, trying to find new scraps.
Absolutely. That's a part of that reservation. That's, yeah, very good. Yeah, you can see there's that where it is, yeah, how it played out now.
And then I realize you're, you're, uh, watching, whatever, but it's how this community, did, see any of the plans or incorporating anything of alternative, smaller energy?
Oh, so, um, I do have an update about that. Um, one of the things, we were talking about solar energy and, um, cutting what, to get the electrical fucked up, so we could have that solar energy. I think it was ninety thousand just to have it all ready to go. Um, and then we didn't have money for solar either, but SWP, uh, recently identified thirty thousand dollars that they could put towards the actual solar panels. We still have to figure out the funding for the electric. So that's about ninety to a hundred thousand dollars, um.
What would that be if we get?
Mechanical.
Part of it, uh.
Right.
With construction, uh, to, to electric operations later or something. I know they have a tremendous, um, solar team, most importantly. I know the windows aren't as big as they used to be, but they're there, um, but you're looking at putting some of the electric goes back in.
Right. And so that's definitely what we'd like to do, right?
So is that, that, you know, passive solar system might work well? I, I believe largely, but yes, um, and you might know, necessarily, the. Yeah.
Very.
Well, back in the sixties, it did not have air conditioning. And it used to easily handle, it'd be easier where it had, it'll be quiet.
Good to know.
And so, and those were possibly open doors or problem.
There's ways to control that. We have access to solar, however, but on lakes and things, it's practically just, you know, the game or something.
Yeah, I mean, that's interrupting. Yeah, thank you so much for your work on this. It's really great to have like an actual physical home for the cultural center. Uh, and, yeah, I just, and I know there's a bunch and everything, but I think we all have things we would love to see in the design. Uh, one thing I think I would encourage is, I think you mentioned that, um, we were going to do a mural or something local. And, uh, we have these amazing opportunities to express our community in creative ways. Like, if we could, uh, one, two local artists to do things, I think that would be great. Like, we have some amazing designers in our community, and we have. I, I agree. Um, and one thing that we're working on, the Public Art Commission, is first of all, offering professional development. So Brian Wiggnall, who did the Dragonfly, had a whole day for people to understand locally how to apply for RF, uh, no, it was, um, Jason Wig, uh, Wiggnall from Dragonfly. Wig.
Oh, I think.
Not Wiggnall, yeah, uh, not Jason. Anyway, quick Wiggnall. Um, and because a lot of, we don't get a lot of submissions from local artists for public art, because these fabrications, for example, like the Dragonfly, uh, not a lot of artists are fabricating large sculpture here. So this was about how do we find fabricators if they don't do it themselves, um, and hooking them up with resources. Um, we don't have a lot of outdoor mosaic artists here. Um, a mural would be great. Um, so we are definitely working with, you know, projects that, uh, all different levels of projects. We can get more local artists, but also working on some resources to offer our artists so, uh, they can participate in some of these, um, other projects. So just definitely on our minds.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. Or they design, a local artist design it, and then maybe we have to bring in some local fabricators or, um, create parts. We always do that too.
Just, just one that I think, uh, I intend to raise with Eric, with the city commission that is available here. The city's recent projects include huge investments in landscaping, tens of thousands of dollars. At the Port Live, at Hampton, looking through years and such. It's being installed, but there is no ongoing feedback that's on. It becomes quite shabby, but, you know, just a couple of years, it's, uh, really, really big. The city is not budgeting for the garden, it's not happening. I, you know, someone, one person, one thing was, years ago, I understand that they had something to give us under. Notice the difference in gardens and city hall.
Um, it would be great if the city could think, you know, work together to develop a really long-term, sustainable method of either you get volunteers, being able to volunteer. Right now, the city, unless you're with a group, you can't volunteer. It's a liability, so you just can't volunteer for the city. So how do other cities do it? How can we adopt spaces more formally out? And, um, budget also, like, I know that with Beunification and that Beunification Public Art Commission, we are looking, we did write the grant, some grant funding for landscaping around some grandfathers, and that's going to take care. And the Public Art Commission's like, if there's landscaping around public art, we will put aside money every year to maintain that. But starting to think about those things, definitely. I know the Beunification really is concerned about the hillside right now, and I know that they would like to work to offer a long-term solution to make that hillside look better. Like, there's invasives growing around Ryan or, you know, Ryan Ryax, uh, sculptures overrun by all kinds of stuff. The cone of dome like benches have vines, and it's no one's job right now to take care of those. So I think also us being in that space and having the community visiting will really activate, hopefully, a lot of other groups and we can, our eyes will be on it, we'll be there, so. We'll bring you to the forefront. Yeah, I would, we should look into that, because I understand that it's not the, I don't know about that. You have to look into it. Really? We've been, we've been told different information. Yeah, so that's, yeah, I would, me, I'll talk with, make sure I connect with Dave and you, because I don't, I've heard different. So I definitely want to be educated, then, if there's a way.
It's a program that, at least at the site, has been, uh, making, like, this for thirty years. I have a question, um, that, uh, I think is very, very interesting. And as part of this is a gotcha question, but this is, um, all of Cultural Center, I mean, we're.
Trailhead, really?
That's what I was coming back to. Now, we've, you know, you and I have been talking about this a long time. As a trailhead project, I don't really see signs of a trail here.
And tell me what signs of the trailhead are here?
Um, like storage, um, a place where bikes might be racked or stored. Um, conservative, not interpretive signage, but we have, at one time, been working together on a, um, a project to create several areas around town where we would have, um, wayfinding and having a wayfinding kiosk here with, um, bike racks and a place for kind of maybe some hangout space down in the lower part of the site. Where, I mean, I think, you know, we recommended this trail connection down to the crosswalk and the street, which is, that's a important conclusion, we can do that. Put a crosswalk there. Although, there has been, um, unfortunate, um, confusion created by the state police with crosswalk use in cities. And, uh, since then, orders and the, the number of motors killing pedestrians have really, really increased a lot in my support by years. And so they, they gave really confusing advice to these departments on that, knowing that the city doesn't want, um, great crosswalks. So we gotta get that straightened out, but, um, anyway.
I do have some answers for that. Um, so, uh, I'm not primarily cultural center anymore. I do have some answers for that, um, so, uh, I'm not entirely cultural center anymore, we're starting to refer to it as a cultural trailhead. And, that trailhead, you're right, we, uh, don't have, we need to look at bike rack situation if it's below the hill. Um, we are looking at that inside way, that there'll be, it'll be on a timer, so you can enter the building, the bathrooms, the water bottle filling station, probably until eight or nine o'clock at night, will be an automatic close, we'll have two bathrooms inside, um, that are very much like the bathrooms at Kids Co., very highly accessible. Um, so you'll be able to enter that warm, um, entryway, um, two bathrooms, water bottle filling station, but also maps, and, you know, looking at, I think that's gonna be more of a, a long-term, I see this as a living trail project, and, um, how can we work with the DDA, kind of reconnect for that wayfinding, um, and this is cultural wayfinding too, it's a cultural trail, so we're bringing people to Wildcat Way, I can't, it's pretty, like, shoreline, letting them know where all the bike paths are. And I think, um, I don't have all the answers, but I do also see that information having to be there, um, and maybe it's directing people who are bike storages, you know, I, I don't know. But, yeah, you're, you're, you're right, it is a trailhead, and it's gonna be to have some of those things.
Oh, another question, um, I know that we don't want you to learn to bike, we do that in detail that much, but, uh, interior, is there going to be a gallery space, or is that a no?
Yeah, I think there's a floor plan in there. And I wish we had more money too, I was really disappointed how little one point two nine goes. Oh, that's a little bummer, so you can see here what they're, if you go back, that's, that's our first option, and it came back like six, seven hundred thousand when we did the pricing, and, um, so we're like, okay, if we didn't do that, could it be, um, so, you know, I think we're gonna include that in a bit, it's really exciting. Um, really sets it off as something different, right? Uh, but if you go, keep going, you get to the floor plan. No, we don't know floor plan, oh, I thought it was, I thought you saw it one of the earlier. Oh, okay. Right. Here we go again, there we go, go back up, so, here's that galleries, sorry, no, I'm too short, right? Here's a walk-in, right, it has open, uh, open hours, um, and I think because, I was talking with the DDA, because the bathrooms are inside, we're going to have a lot less mess, I mean, there's cameras, there's gonna be bathroom, um, bathrooms inside, as she was saying, that I think that you were being able to keep up on the cleanliness of bathrooms.
So you're saying the galleries up there?
Um, we would, no, it's, this is kind of a, they call it the gallery, this is our, like, we don't know what it's called, a through space, the, the architects keep calling it the gallery, I think it's not possible space. But this is a through space in the bathrooms, glass doors, you walk, this will be kind of preconceived in that, since it's your foyer. Um, we're leaving a, a door, a sized window here, in case you were finding money for that balcony area. This is glass here as well, and this is your multi-purpose room, so you can come into this section, you know, uh, work with staff, whatever project, staff is over here, and then the multi-purpose room, uh, which is not messy arts, we're not looking at that, there really is, uh, multi-purpose room, where we can have exhibits if we'd like. Uh, I don't wanna commit to anything, it's hard to know what staff capacity you have, but definitely art will be throughout this space, it could be exhibits, or stretching out for a baby shower, a meeting, um.
It's mostly just rental space, is that how it works?
Rental space, yeah, but I think, you know, part of our job as a, a cultural trailhead is to work with our partners, so there's programs that are happening there, we might not be doing the programs, but I would love for cultures to meet there, or, I don't know, um, any community groups to meet there, and we'll feel like a clear space. Offices, small, but here, conference room for the community and for, uh, office, and then very, uh, internship and intern space and pop here, and just a very tiny kitchenette. So it's a small space, but you can see, we're gonna have much smaller workspace here, and this is really the community development space. And cozy, gold pastel place, where hopefully you guys will want to get the coffee, and some often, and handout.
Fair, fair footed vice, is this, so you can, bigger, smaller same than, uh, comparison center currently?
Much smaller.
Okay.
And that's okay, the reason we're moving is, we're, I met, talked to, uh, office, I believe, we're an office that transitioned from programming to capacity building, becoming more of a resource hub for the community. Working on projects like public art, public art policy, writing grants for projects like this, um, and to build that capacity, you have to leave the library. That's also thirty thousand dollars annually that goes to, this is a public facility, it goes to, not our public, but city facility, library. The library is excited about having that space, they're going to operate it very much the same way, um, the community will be able to, uh, rent that space like they do now. Um, I think it's a great, um, opportunity for the library, for all their programming staff to move downstairs, they're excited about being in our offices right now, if you, their office, or these TV bill spaces upstairs, but all their programs are downstairs, so they're really excited to use that space, and we've developed the gallery programs, we're transitioning it. Um, we're gonna help them, but we also just want to grant this year their seat, so they can hire their staff to manage the gallery spaces, but those will also continue. Um, so this, we're hoping, I mean, I think it's, we're gonna do a whole lot of renting of spaces, um, but also build more capacity to do the work that's set forth in the master plan, and then encourage community art center, other places, and help rate, you know, grants, and, um, hopefully store some other exciting things to happen. Smaller, it's okay, I don't care, I can get a little cubicle, I'm fine with that.
Glad to hear that the gallery space will.
Absolutely, I am a little committed to that, and already working with different groups, um, to make sure that, presenting this as a great gallery.
Any other thoughts or comments, um, if you have a question? I think our, looking at our charge for tonight, we are, um, actually, we should be making act, um, charge for either improving or disapproving this, uh, if you want to ask me any other questions about specific detail, or just, that improvement, or, if they were, no questions, or, um, Dave, have you made an additional motion on this, or?
Yeah, I think we could make some kind of motion, like, just, um, you know, it says, uh, related to the character, it's not location purpose, or, um, the home purpose.
Yeah, it looks like the statute causes to buy reasons for the purple or this. Someone feeling like, can you put a motion together on this one?
Give you time if you wanna rate it out. All right.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion, um, the planning commission supports, uh, the plans as presented, um, for reasons that it allows for community gathering space, um, indicate accessibility, and is generally in the character, it's that location and purpose of community. Cultural development, there we go.
All right, we got a motion, is there a second? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, thank you. Pass this.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, and if I, so, you know, these two paintings are being located, so everyone can see them.
Have to watch that light over there.
Yes.
I mean, I'm sorry, this.
Awesome, all right, so, Jen, uh, five, so any sort of, we should address the, uh, agenda items? Okay, so, none, we have no correspondence, we have no visits, whether it works, we have no training, uh, so we will move on to the, and development photographs.
I'm curious, uh, we've worked out this, uh, initial, set of manuals.
All right, so, the first one, uh, is adding, um, if you guys agree to this, then we'll also update figures by adding a sample of it, but asymmetrical gable roofs. And then what that looks like is where you have the one side, and then they go a little bit on the other side of the surface. So, the idea is that we would add that into it, because we may be seeing more of these, um, it's not a shed roof, because there are avenues of gable roofs on the side. So we would like to add, asymmetrical gable roofs will be measured from the longest roof, the vertical distance between the average grade and the average height between the roofs and the ridge. So it'll be measured on this side, going through the average, just like normal gable roof, or, because it's not on both sides either, that's what we have permanent.
Any thoughts on this? I think so, it's the end of the question. Do you agree with this one?
All right. Uh, this is that image with mommy, you know? Well, is that the picture that you showed here, was just like the records? No, uh, that is no, this was samples, you're, the fact that I added samples in there, that's not gonna be, we're just doing a work session right now. I will update, now that you guys gave me the okay, we will update this figure too, with an actual drawing that matches.
Okay, so you started with the drawing, a little bush league.
Oh, yeah. Uh, that's part of the drawing now. Just so you know. And our, I did, uh, uh, next one, on the condo and aid developments, we have a policy, and we'd like to add it to the development code, that even though condo reviews are, their site can review, they're not public curators, but we have, always had a policy that we send a notice out to the JCPark viewers, the JCPark viewers from the site access points. And this includes those across from the street, so we would just like to add that notice into that development code, but that's the city policy, town and development code. Do you have any comments on that?
It's a good idea.
I think you have a good idea, too.
Yeah.
Just looking at, uh, the more places we can iterate, there is, or if you would have to.
All right, so the next one, residential level panel paving. This, um, started with the new land development code in twenty nineteen, and this past year, we had, um, somebody wanting to build something like these pictures here. Previous ones have been, the, the normal ones that you see, like, the building was just a fence everywhere. Um, so we really didn't have anything in the code that we could reference with this, so the idea is, um, for the outdoor useful space, that if the outdoor space is just enclosed with a fence, we review it under the fence requirements for the LDR and the MDRs under this image. If the outdoor space has a roof or a cover, then we're gonna review under the accessory structure requirements, so they have to be those accessory structures, so that would allow us to, if they wanna build an accessory structure, we'd have to. And the only last year is if you don't want us to add this, we only want it to be a vest.
Just like you said, fully consistent, dog panels, or diagrams.
The dog panel, if they're making up, this would be accessory structure, the dog on the, you know, fence.
As long as, here we find that.
Anything else, people?
Yeah.
What about the ones that are mobile?
It says something in there.
Is there, is that covered, I, I think.
Yeah, so, yeah, if you have, you have the enclosed housing for the handsets under a different section.
Okay.
So it's if they're, if they're, if they're wanting to build this on top, or build it like, like, there's actually more of a building.
Well, so, they move in the yard, you know what I'm talking about?
So, yeah. Well, checking housing must be required, so that's, you know, what kind.
Okay, cool, I think that could be my, that's in number eight.
And wherever, wherever somebody applies for it, sheds could be movable too, you know, when they apply for it, they tell us where it's at, they can't move it from that point, otherwise it happens. And they're all aware of that.
I don't quit.
Did you guys have any issues with allowing for something like this? Ready? Uh, another thing is directional signs, so the code right now really doesn't allow directional signs to have a business name or logo, but there is, there is a need to have business name or logo for directional signs, so people will know that, say, if it's more of a off-the-side of a building or something like that, you know, no, they need to have something to direct you to know that if you wanna build this business, this is where it's at, so we're adding, asking to add this language to include a business name or logo on a directional sign, not call it commercial advertising, because it's needed to that direct book, that's, that's right. Um, they still have to maintain the sizes in the chart, which is still allowed, and, um, do you guys have any issues with that?
Are we allowing those directional signs in the right way yet?
No, they're still on the prior ground.
Because, often times, particularly where, driving entrance makes its signs, maybe, or, to be, I have orders to see if they have to be in the right way. And, quite often, we may be needing to be made, or some certification business, that will be particularly useful, using shared driveways.
So our code doesn't allow for signs in the right way unless they be X, Y, Z, or stolen, if they want to, somebody in the right way to apply for licenses. But, the directional signs we have in our code right now is for exemptions for private, right, the right end.
Thinking that we should keep on, or, chart, McDonald's signs, or their driveways that are out there, the state, highly dependent, actually, changed the driveway locations, have them pull out, and actually, and actually required McDonald's to put directional signs, they violated the charter ordinance, but, uh, because MTH actually, they actually put there, we can allow that to be written in the, in the direction. Can you, can we, McDonald's off of forty one instead of eight, you could, that's like.
Yeah, there's a limit set of circumstances for the city law for directional signs, like, you know, the cost of, so, they can't. Going for traffic business, it's right away, it sounds like, and use exception, because it's just some people going to that destination.
And it does say, under prohibited signs, any signs in a right of way or access placement other than traffic, control signs, non-commercial, directional signs, and wayfinding signs are recommended, so they would have to give it to public works.
So there's an option for some direction.
For some.
Well, but, I've never, no, are, yeah. Better question, uh, all this stuff comes up because of, what we meant, uh, you can tell the ministry, like, why this is on here today, and where these signs play down, I think.
Well, um, so, somebody did submit, normally they don't put directional signs on the science permits, because we don't review them, but somebody did, and we're reviewing them, and then, um, we have a person reviewing the time permits, and everything now, we noticed that, looked at the definition, it doesn't allow for it, so that brought our attention, so, that's just what happens, one thing to get our attention, is to see what needs to be fixed, and we looked at that, and said, oh, we need to have this. needs to be fixed, and we looked at that and said, oh, we need to have this, the definition to allow for it. So we see a need for it. And then around, I saw actually there were some directional signs out there that had what was it? Okay. Are you okay with adding this then? Uh, so the B T A, we don't see a lot of bases, but we did see a couple expansions of, um, class A. And again, looked at the code and realized that we didn't have language for any expiration dates for ones in regular language, especially for class A.
I'm gonna suggest we expand the class A to class B or. For everyone. So. All around.
Okay, so in section of our code, and under non-conforming uses and structures, we have two classes. Class B is, uh.
Legally non-conforming structures.
Okay, so class B are going to be, um, structures that when they were erected, uses that were put into place, they met code, then over the years, code changed. So they went from being a forming use to a legal non-conforming use. Class B is somebody who hasn't applied for a class A. Class A in our code is if you apply for it and receive approval, if it completely burns down, you can re-build. Then we also have this thing where people have been applying for expansions of class A. But we didn't have language in our code that we should have in the top city attorney, so this is for code. A sample of a class A use could be a commercial use in a residential neighborhood, office uses, then their little prime core, uh, flipping in a commercial strip off of Washington Street. You know, there's a lot of homes on there, so those are gonna be examples of non-conforming uses as well. They're in a zoning district that doesn't allow for residential, but they were built as residential, and they're not allowed to sign. So they're illegal and factored. So the proposal here is to add the expansion of a class A language in here, add items that makes it very clear what the usage is looking at, and to have an approval period so it expires, so it doesn't remain forever. Like, once they get approved, they don't even have to do it, they can wait twenty years or something. So we don't want that. We want this to be the same like variance, and especially land uses. They have a time period that they have to do it, um, and they can ask for extension, so it's the same like. You guys have any issues with that?
Just one question. So your top page seven. Page six, B one, A, I, possible expansions, and it says that two log units of the same one, Marshall. How is that, should I, it's a big, it's a recall. Right, get the residence.
Right, uh, so they're not AUs and single family structures, AUs approved under the accessory requirement. So it's not all the secondary single family. Is this approved as an A U? I know that we are gonna be talking about, uh, one of the times bringing them, but right now, the A U requires covenant, so there are differences that the owner has to live on it as an A U. And our code, we approve it as a accessory dwelling, not as another sample.
Yeah, that's another.
They are permitted, all right? They're permitted use.
Okay. Or do they have to get a special permit?
They can just, don't have to permit, once somebody wants to build one or, yeah.
It's identified as a specific use. So that whole second article says on specific use of standards.
Is in our code right now, it states you can only have one single family structure on the personal.
Just doesn't seem very period. It can be the same structure, but it just goes on a day.
Well, it's an accessory structure to the single family, it's an accessory dwelling that helps serve the single family.
That'd be true. Size law, that, those second structure. I guess I'm wondering if it would be a difference, but. Because if you do it by your own, people would have to get this. Have a, a, well, that's.
No, that's not a requirement right now. That was removed. The requirement is that you have this work requirement, you have this covenant, the owner occupy covenant, where the owner has a living or a unit. But that may be something you guys are discussing.
Yeah, that's the most thing we're having to care to discuss, whether or not you want to do that, because a lot of, Minnesota, middle missing housing advocates are recommending bring it together. We, we even had, uh, grabbing from MSA extension asking if we were gonna entertain that before last one. Obviously, it's a, but. But to me, that's still a main sort of confusing point, probably for your act. But there's a main structure and then accessories, and that's still is there an accessory to the main structure? And especially with the way we've limited the size of those. But I can tell you that, I just, um, went through a webinar, handled that, we're all with the guy who invented homeless, he knows the technologies, and not, there's a lot of communities now that are allowing two AUs. So it's really catching fire because it's been, in, in some places, it's becoming the main way that they're expanding housing.
Um, so are you saying that you want us to change the wording?
Well, I don't know what it would take. It's a very bad, but I, um, I think it needs a little bit more clarification than what we're seeing in the section of what we've got right here.
We could write two single family structures, a caption, AUs.
At least maybe another reference to say that will be.
But AUs are going to be a non-conforming thing, that it'd be a permitted thing. So two single family structures per code would be a non-conforming thing. So maybe that's a difference. Because we're looking at non-conforming.
We would like to be trying to exercise, probably, because that's the main, with that, the owner has to do it right now. It would be better if it's seventy.
Seventy or something like that.
Yeah. Well, either way, but I think, right, I mean, I think, but I think, Christian is a great one, functionally. But I don't think we're gonna come back to the A U question.
Um, yeah, sure. We were approached about tiny houses that was over at the lake, and the same thing with a lot, and then you could put a tiny house on there, and that's a structure size.
That's what I'm talking about, AUs.
Right, but I mean, two of those are so small, I could see if you had an acre, how they, somebody could want a new two house on there.
Everybody else is, yeah, that's my.
No, I'm just saying that that came up as to where, I mean, we're gonna allow this and, you know, within existing structure and yada, yada, yada. So I know more about tiny houses than I ever want to know.
Would it be possible to put a note on here, um, addressing this concern, but to be able to decide right now on if we want to add or wish to review expiration period?
Say that again.
Can we decide on just focusing on adding language for the review and expiration for the approval period here, but add note that we want to hold out and discuss the language that was just.
The exception language, yeah.
Thank you for keeping us focused, yeah. So are, are we good with like the language about the review and the expiration period? Coming back to the same.
Uh, somebody I called and asked about a bar in the private street corridor, and looking at it, I found that we were missing the use of a bar, we don't have bars in the private street corridor. So this is another one of those fixes. Um, I didn't update that bigger, um, for cable, no, and again, where do the big changes that you make during that? You're okay to do it. Um, but, so looking at the definitions, uh, on a retail service, we might add bar. And then in the bigger try four, is the table permitted use, a special use for church street corridor district. We would like to add, update it to match the items that are in the definitions that are missing from that table, bars, sidewalk cafes that are on private property, and medical and dental offices. Do you guys, um, have any issues with that?
It's a fashion for, for those categories.
That probably would fall under retail services.
Primary mailers.
Exactly.
B T A use it. Call them bars.
Are we good with that? Okay, up to two, one. Yeah, all right, flag signs. Do you guys want to allow more flag signs? Right now, in our code, flag, you're allowed, um, any number of non-commercial flags, but only one commercial flag or pennant, maybe displayed, and we have this work footage. And this is where it's exempt from getting assigned for it. And these are what the flag signs will apply.
I'm gonna add a little to, to this. We've had a problem with a couple places around town that have been using more than one. They've had some off the grounds. Um, and this is something, you know, we, we use administrative discretion to enforce it, and one of the, one of the ways to do that is just seeing if we've got any complaints about this issue. And I haven't told anybody this, but, um, I, uh, up to the point where we decided to add this to this packet class B, I had not heard a complaint. And then, maybe it's the same day, but Friday after work, I went to Black Rocks and a friend, and there were rear force city commissioners there. One of them came up to me and said, hey, I got a complaint about this site that has a pennant on it. Um, and one of them was off premise, you know, he said, yeah, the other one's been isolated from the plant, but, yeah, I'm aware of that, um, situation. I wanted to wait this evening, but a complaint about it, because I've been there all summer, and nobody's been complaining. Um, that earlier, that same week, I got a call from the zoning administrator in Iron Mountain saying, why do you guys break? I don't want to let your code, I can't really find them, because they're, it's not really, it's called a pennant, like in the sign ordinance, these are under the definition of pennants. Um, and in Iron Mountain, and I noticed this driving through there a couple times this summer, there were a couple businesses that had just a ridiculous amount of these things, like six of them in right of way, in front of like a fifty foot lot. And so somewhere in between there, I think there's probably a balance we can strike, but one doesn't seem like it's really adequate for a lot of businesses, because obviously businesses that want to put these out, and that second one should, maybe if they have more than one, we should put some kind of time limitation on, like we do with other things, we have temporary signage, just we allow seasonally, you know? That gets difficult to regulate things by time. Um, if we don't have a permit for it, it's almost impossible to know what to find this and, and so, and so. We can see.
I'm also excited.
Great. Anybody else?
I don't have a problem with water, maybe two, but it's not, then it gets very confusing for drivers. It's just too much activity going on. It's visual.
It would be like a specified position. Sorry. They're good, maybe.
Christian, what did you?
Um, there could be also distance between the right of way line and sign, that's another consideration, especially one. It's always a purpose, it's a, it's a great one.
Yeah, some of those two issues, we've had so much about, non-organic signs, but more if you're obstructing groundness or interfere with this one.
That's an issue, but we're asking if we should allow people to use more than one of these at a time, because all there are allowed right now is one of these to play and for, just, you know, think about, you don't see many of these around the community, but businesses do like to use them, um, occasionally in some places, like the place I'm talking about, Street Bluff, you know, they, they put a flag, they put one of these out near the highway, um, somebody else's property this summer. They kept one plan on it all summer, but one of our city commissioners, I believe, that works recently.
Do we wanna go down the packet or something? So maybe we just start, like, do we wanna allow more flags to push through, or just go down like two or four?
I don't see any problem with it. I don't see any more distraction at the MTV and sitting here dashing, your car eating.
So you think maybe open it up to more lights?
I think so. I think you'd do.
I, I think you can get too much, so I guess I'd go with it to two. I don't see a reason for it, I just see a reason for timing.
I guess I'm up to five and two.
I, uh, I'm mission, this is because, uh, just, I think that was against, I'll make a wider law, maybe. I want, um, that's not.
Uh, I'd say the.
Well, you go, I appreciate you.
Yeah, I'm kind of, I'm sure Larry, I think it's five and maybe, yeah, you know, it's kind of, it's not totally broke into, in case by case enforcement. I know I shouldn't say that, but.
It's not a huge. As long as it's not a safety hazard, that's what I. I mean, if you have two close to the road and they can fall out into, that's my only concern. If they're back and they're not, you know, up there interfering, then I have no, no problem with them. But I don't know what the magic cutoff is for how close to the road, if they're not putting them on their own property, but they're in the right way.
Do they wanna make a case for maybe some nuanced language for those of you who thought allowing from where?
We, we only allow one now?
Correct. That or a non-commercial flag. Or a commercial flag.
Or business.
On the side or something. One of the, one of the.
Yeah.
There's nothing. Full of like consensus on this. Probably for if people who think it should be changed, that suggestion, like, would people want to add more, possibly, but would you guys add?
Most of you did say you would allow two.
I was good with the language. Right, so, raise your hand. How many people, was it three people that are good with the language as is?
I was thinking about standing.
Four. Okay, I can, I can go that way.
I'm fine with it, yes, it is. Most of you did say you would allow two.
I was good with the language. Right, so raise your hand. How many people, was it three people that are good with the language as is?
I was thinking about standing.
Four. I could go that way.
I'm fine with it.
And then how many, how many are okay if we go up to two?
It's neither here or there. If they're more of a construction.
Are you good with the language?
I guess, I, you know, I just want safety to be a consideration.
So if we were to open up two, you'd like to see more language, is what I heard your thing, right? Regarding on location, distance between them, maybe height of lot size, safety.
I don't think we need to mark with a micrometer here, but I just am concerned that they don't seem to be using common sense, some of them, and they're putting them out in the right-of-way. So do we, we please that now, right?
If they're the right-of-way, yes.
Okay, that's my big concern. I don't care what they do in their property.
Okay, so at the last meeting, all the comments that we mentioned about our intentional community dwelling requirements. So I threw those in there and have that, do you want us to change this?
I have some thoughts about it. So I gathered what she was talking, the gentleman, I don't remember what their name, I don't remember. But they were not necessarily talking about the same type of cooperative. So for one, the climbers' co-op on 4th Street is very much intentional community dwelling in line with this. But what the gentleman at 410 Ridge was talking about was more like a New York City-style condominium or co-op building, where everyone has their own little part of it and it's cooperatively owned, it allows them to have an ownership of the building. They have a plot, it's almost like a site on that rather than this intentional community. The social cohesion element that's referenced in this exists because they're all owners of the same building, but it's not like they're cooking deals together. So that's a little bit of a different interplay. The reason that I looked this up today, New York City housing co-ops became an issue in the first place and became used to existence is very old brownstones like 410 Ridge became comparatively expensive and they were able to have an ability to condoize them, go ahead and have group ownership. They tend to have a harder time. Co-op boards have a very strenuous vetting process because they want to have people that are like-minded, so that's where the social community comes from. But I don't think what they were talking about and what this is talking about are necessarily the same thing.
Actually, it's research on it too, and I think the tenant association is what you're hoping about the difference. And Chicago actually recently passed a ordinance, a right of first refusal. So the city of Chicago now has more than citywide, right? So it's a municipal city. That when there's a multifamily unit building like for sale, the current tenants have the right of first refusal and they're given a hundred and twenty weeks. They're given a timeframe, basically, get their legal stuff together and if they can, purchase it themselves before it's sold to, you know, as a developer. So, so, yeah, so I have, I have a student actually doing some research on like other, what cities have done to try to prevent gentrification or gentrification, I think, where displacing lower-income people, you know, wealthier people who can move in the board increasingly expensive units in cities. And, and, you know, as you would expect, like, some of their cities have some policies. But I think, I think it would be worth, I don't know, we've worked it out to develop our commission to the city commission, but I think there's things that Mark that could be doing to try to get ahead of what we're going to see more of. I think we're going to see more of that. Many of us already seeing it as younger families and people who work here and work and live here. But, yeah, so tenant association, but that was one thing I was kind of not totally clear on, like, what, I think a tenant association is different from this intentional community because maybe it doesn't have the baggage of potential community, I think carries a lot of baggage with it. I think that's what Alex, the gentleman who spoke, was trying to point out, that we're not a bunch of individuals that are like, give your no love, like, people who work here and won't stay here, who are able to work here.
So in the definition, the housing cooperative is with that. So they, and I, we did review, because we met with that gentleman that was here and tried to give options, like, we can go through as a condominium, a prior or passive way through and something, but he wanted to go through this in the housing cooperative, which that's in the definition, so I don't know, are you wanting to pull like a housing cooperative out of an intentional community dwelling?
Maybe.
Well, I mean, I guess like if we did have something like tenant association, which is just what he was talking about, if people who are renters that want to be together, is that?
That's a housing cooperative, because they're only in.
Okay, so that is the same thing.
Yes.
Actually. I mean, it's real. Yeah. I don't know, I just said they're really.
I think it was also the beginning with the, what was it called? When they had to have the cycle of that.
Survey.
In the survey.
Maybe they were way out of line.
Yes, probably.
I don't see that.
I, I know.
I know.
Plus, there's something like.
There's now.
No, but I mean, in, for site plan review, there is a requirement of having a survey. But they're only like $500.
Or even a lot of these in full site.
No, you can have like a location sketch survey. You, we allow for the lower, sorry, lower levels of surveys per, still not $30,000. Yeah, I don't know.
Maybe not even $1,000.
I don't know where that's coming from.
So that's a long way out of reality. That's not even close to reality. Even that big property over there, it wouldn't cost anything to that.
Yeah, I know.
That's not, that's not going to be near the most expensive thing. The most expensive thing would be a property, such as land use. And there's a pretty good case that something that's this different from typical housing might need a special land use, depending on where it is, like the climbers' co-op. I think everybody felt like that was worthy of going through special land use.
What's this, this highlighted section is that, where's the change?
So we're not, I'm not promoting any change, I just provided it in the regulations because you guys want it discussed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just highlighting so you can ease up seeing it. I should have put it in a color, you know what, I'm sorry about that. Because yellow's where the change is, you are correct, but I am sorry about that. That's just showing you in the chart where it is and then where it is as special land uses. So maybe that's something you guys might want to look at. Do you think maybe whole thing is intentional? Would it be appropriate we have permitted use? Would it be appropriate we have permitted use in central business district? You know, these are things we can, you know, people get.
I think it makes sense for it to be permitted use in a multi-family, that would also go in, it doesn't matter. It's just like, is it intentional or unintentional? It was spaced together, so to me, it makes sense for it to be permitted use in a local district.
But I see hands on it. A yes or a negative permitted for multiple family residential zoning.
Excuse?
Yeah, I think it makes sense because it's still kind of a new category for community to be like having it however. That's my opinion.
Central business district? What is the count? Okay, so just for a local family. Which I, which is a change for me. Um, but so after talking about this, are you guys, Kevin had mentioned it, but are you thinking about removing housing cooperatives from intentional dwelling? Do you see an issue of that?
But I see housing cooperative as simply an ownership structure rather than an intentional dwelling. And I don't understand necessarily how it, like, as the ownership structure, I don't know why we're removing an ownership structure. It's the same in my mind, as one person is owning it, if many people are banging their home together. But if it's in here and allowed the provision, I'm fine with it staying as is until you can put some more thought and cover into it.
Yeah, I feel like maybe we do a little more, personally, I feel like I would want to do a little more research on like other things that are still our size, do we have something to do with that? Come back to this and maybe come back to it as a set and other things we can do around housing society.
We have some liability issues because they're all owners and then getting insurance that we've covered, the dwelling as a whole. There's some other things that are legal that are tossed into that now, when you've got everybody owning a piece of it versus the cooperative kind of more of a home where you have central areas for, you know, like going down the street on 4th Street. But I mean, condominiums, no, but I mean, that's got nothing to do with us, but I mean, that's kind of one of the differentiation. Who's going to be responsible if something happens? And if you've got a board in place and golly, golly, ah.
Their co-op, or we already had cooperative businesses that.
Right.
Get insurance, yeah, pay for it and maintain their.
I wonder if that was part of this money issues is that when they started looking at putting in a tenant's, you know, roof and.
It's possible that they didn't have enough capital to.
Right.
That's one reason we classify this at all is because it's got a different ownership structure.
Right.
Ownership is the organizing principle for property management development. True, but corporation can't own a home too, and that's far more people associated with corporations than a cooperative. And we're not saying that corporations can't own homes. We're LLCs, it's all multi-member. It's true, but in this case where we've got multiple owners that are living together and acting as a group, sharing things, there's going to be different outcomes for what properties manage.
So.
If we don't interact with it necessarily the same way.
And I think, looking at it differently, so an LLC can own a single-family residence, or if they want to rent it, they're only allowed to rent it up to four people. They didn't have that back then, they would, right, five people. So, but the cooperative, they can apply for X amount of people, they can provide, how we're going to need everything for 10 people living together, or 14 or. So the climbers' co-op first started as a long-term rental with just four people, ended up a poor time. Then they, they wanted to expand to more people and that's what we added all this and went through the process. So it is different because you're allowed to have more people living in that place. When you're dealing with the single-family homes, so when you're dealing with, now let's look at the multiple-family dwelling, right? So an LLC is going to own that and they have to have rentals for the kids, for rent to have each unit. The housing cooperative, I don't think they would have to have rentals for their kids because they're all owners of their units. So we would be looking at it from our end with that. And then going through this, they may be able to get more people living in there as well with that thing on.
Quite a bit. I mean, owners got the kind of numbers or the, but it's far more.
So, so, I don't know, just talking it out loud, so those are the differences.
Hey, just to get into such detail, I would say you're going to go, very, to pass your deal, to ensure of the rules, regarding to the system of policy, whoever, nobody seen conflating segment of a building with really pushing.
Yes, we do review condos too, just when they're driving up a building as a building.
So much more intensive, so the housing cooperative is operating, they apply with less review than the segment of the building itself. This type of frenzy at this point, changing. And, and the other thing is, I think almost each of these cases is going to be unique and to try to write up what sites, it's all rule, they'll be happy with it. I don't want it, I think, yeah, more of a problem.
So the one thing to note is if we do change a multiple-family one to permitted use, what's, we, we have to put a requirement, we'd like to still have maybe even staff do the same thing. We're only saying that they can just draw a plot line and take that, which I don't think that would be something, I think we would want to have it for administrative or things to. Like, I think you can scratch this and say, I'm just doing this, or a human.
Right.
Yes, or, I think even though it's permitted use, it doesn't need for, we're saying it doesn't need for the land permission, but I just think it's going to need for the site plan review, so we can have those official architectural minds to review what they're doing.
You guys, you don't care for that shit. What was it fair?
The only difference is they wouldn't have to have a permit to land permission. All right, so we forget language for that.
Cool, but, yeah, I think I do think these kind of, like, new creative types of ways of making housing accessible, I think, to me, the lucky other cities, whether it's the town.
Um, so in this, you talked about you guys wanted to do more research, or you talked about doing more research under this heading of an intentional community dwelling, or just looking at different housing?
I think this plus other. What's going to be, maybe even up to the per view of this, we should, for city commissioners? We, I mean, Michigan has the rent control policy, so we'll never do that, but I mean, there are things to do, to be around, to try to protect people who work in, living.
So you just want to tap it when you're ready to talk about it again, and any other ideas? Is that how we're going to want to do it? Okay.
Would that be good to others too, if you guys are?
I'm fine with what we have in the regulation itself, but a little bit under the possibility of it's not on.
Cool.
Thanks for bringing that up too, in real spirit. So you listened and like addressed it.
All right, I think that's all, right? That is the whole packet of stuff? All right, so commission and staff comments? Everyone wants to start this up?
I have no comment. No comment.
I'll just sort of take.
That's a perfect. Yeah, we're going to be putting together some more things regarding housing, to try to give it more possible in this, in the old C amendments that are, you know, setbacks would be another one to look at. increasing setback in the first quarter, maybe a lot of this. Yeah, so I don't know if you've had time to think about things, just wanted to bring up the city commission, and those, this, this grand bird session is not going to be a long time. I probably want to keep it to 90 minutes, but came back to thinking about some things that, we do have that housing action plan that was adopted, any master plan, so maybe y'all want to look at that and think about some things that are recommended in that and bring those questions up. And I guess have a dialogue here between the mission on this, but while you communicate with the chair, if you guys don't want to just kind of. But while you communicate with the chair, if you guys don't want to just kind of work that out. Sarah's going to be speaking, you know, for the planning commission pretty much, you know, people. You're going to be there for most of that meeting, usually early. Yeah, so Evan will take over as the lead planning commission with.
December the fourth, correct, at five fifteen?
Yes.
And do we have a regular planning meeting on the Tuesday before?
So we didn't get any items?
We don't have any items, um, we've been probably skipped that meeting, um, seeing as you got the team from that side. And probably want to have a meeting regardless of whether we have items of business activity on, uh, something, seventy. Probably want to have a meeting to go over all the season. But there's the housing action plan that's built into the master plan that was adopted and it's a climate action framework. So those are both things that are set up to be basically to have taken into consideration what we've already been talking about in our planning. And they drafted those things to be the sort of framework plan. So all you've got to do is kind of dial in some things that fit your community. And you can get started pretty quickly on developing climate action plan or housing action plan. Um, they're not actually plans themselves, but they're frameworks for a plan. So those have looked really good. And I mentioned that I sat through, um, a webinar last week with Daniel Perold, um, about missing middle housing strategies. And it was very good, I mean, continuous evolution of ideas on new housing types. And a lot of that stuff is happening in places where there's, you know, a lot more pressure than there is here, population pressure. And, um, but some very good, um, ideas. And that's, that's where I think we can benefit from taking a look at that housing action plan and maybe seeing if there's some things in there that the city commission is willing to. But one of the, one of the things that came up that was mentioned in there is there's no way to create affordable housing at this point in time. Unless there's some kind of gift to develop. Developers cannot create profit on building housing unless they have a gift of land or a tax abatement or some kind of incentive. Something that really does turn a corner, then I'm trapped on making it profitable, which is not possible. So it's not to play their materials, planning. But if the economy crashes here coming up in housing creators, then you know, we can turn out that people, yeah, for helping. Oh, that's just an observation I read today.
Um, just a question of the format, so like there, is it a format, maybe the fourth, is it just an open conversation? Would you like to be powerful or?
Well, I guess, uh, two things I would like to, uh, as part of that agenda, as I mentioned, I would, uh, be considering alternative energy or, uh, future municipal projects. And, um, plan for deepness of the capital investments.
Right, excellent.
Not, not just landscape, but general, landscape, or take whatever. Since we've added that in a lot of cases to, uh, the, you know, support the area.
Yeah, exactly. Right, yeah, that alternative energy is part of that climate action, great.
And we'll be, we can update us on, on what progress is being made, uh, in. In the city's home. Did have a conversation with the city manager about that, not to come on the board, she said she was, um, real, she's on board with trying to get some movement on that.
Excellent. All right, well, we will adjourn this meeting at seven thirty six. Thank you.